Down. On the machines, we've got feedback there. Okay, Mr. Many, can we go on to the business, please?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being livestreamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to speaker? Please allow a pause after the last speaker has muted their microphone. Please then press the right-hand button on your console to activate your microphone. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please start the meeting with your camera on and your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands up function or intervene in any other way. And would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding these procedures? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hunter.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson. Councillor Black.
Present.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
We've received apologies for councillor Elnackla. Councillor Flynn.
Here, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Here.
Councillor Mills.
Present.
We've received apologies for Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rome. Let's see, Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Good evening, here.
Councillor Smith.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McKeer.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Scullen.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Shears.
Evening, I'm here.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey MacPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Mrs. McBean.
I'm here.
Mrs. Little.
I'm here.
Mr. Gibson.
I think Mr. Gibson's indicated in the chat that he is having issues, he's gone out and come back in, but he will be here.
Miss Bartley.
I'm here.
Mrs. Javid. Mr. Anderson McGuinness. And we've received apologies from Miss D.
Okay, thanks for that. Can we just make a start now on the agenda, please?
Item one, are there any declarations of interest?
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody indicating.
Item two, achievement of curriculum for excellence levels twenty twenty-three, twenty-two four, and this is for noting.
Okay, councillor Coleman, I see you have a question, so I'll bring you in first.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. The information in appendix two about the achievement levels in each quintile is rather stark, showing both numeracy and literacy gap between quintile one and quintile five remains rather significant. I'm sure all committee members and officers would agree that closing the gap is vital in Dundee's case, particularly important as overall pupil body is heavily weighted towards quintiles one and two. I note the strategy is highlighted in paragraph seven point one to further improve the situation and close the gap, but are officers confident that making a making significant narrowing of that gap will be achieved in the short to medium term?
Okay, thank you for that question. I'll pass over to Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, convener, thank you for the question, councillor. As you hopefully will see in the report, we're making some good progress in relation to reducing and narrowing the poverty attainment gap indeed. And it's less in Dundee than it is in terms of the national average. We continue to work closely with our schools to make effective use of the pupil equity funds and their other collective resources to continue to reduce that gap and have plans in place that will continue to narrow that gap year in year, but I'm happy to provide further detail if that's helpful.
Okay, councillor Coleman, you happy with that?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, councillor Crookshank.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Paul, for 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 that answer to councillor, I forgot his second name, sorry, about closing the poverty attainment gap. And I'd like to welcome this positive report, and it's good to see the ongoing improvement in our primary schools attainment. With the Scottish government funding being cut again this year for Dundee, how will we manage to continue to deliver to deliver this ongoing improvement? Thank you.
No, thank you, good question. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you very much, convener, and thank you councillor Crookshank for your comments and for your questions. And we, part of the people equity fund and the strategic equity fund, so the Scottish attainment challenge monies was always to build plans that are sustainable. And so we continue to build capacity with a huge investment in the professional learning, and we'll continue to do do so so that our teachers, our support staff are well equipped to support our young people to achieve the ambitious goals that we have. So we will make sure that every penny is well spent and it's spent as much as possible on things that are sustainable, which includes professional learning and building capacity. Thank you.
Okay, you happy with that response, councillor Crookshank? I'll take that as a yes. Bailey MacPherson, sorry, Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks very much, convener. Councillor Coleman and indeed councillor Crookshank's questions around closing As councillor Coleman alluded to, a significant gap between quintiles one and five remaining, and that's not just a Dundee thing, that's a that 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 exists amongst quite a number of Scottish local authorities. In relation to whether or not we are as an authority going to further improve the situation, I would say that unfortunately the optics are not that good. Councillor Crookshank correctly alluded to the fact that the Scottish attainment challenge monies are reducing and indeed will end in the not too distant future. And I do have to say that the fact that both the SNP group and the Labour group cut five hundred and forty-two thousand pounds from devolved school budgets cannot be good news, something that the Liberal Democrat group went to some lengths to ensure was not included in our budget. And I therefore found it quite ironic that councillor Shears should talk about austerity, because if anyone was providing austerity councillor Shears in their budgets in relation to education, it was Labour and the SNP. And I thought that it's that the point obviously wasn't lost on Bailey Soares, who tried his level best to stop me asking a question about the negative effects. And let's just remember what the negative effects were, and this is feedback from the officers, the potential for impact on educational quality and effect on vulnerable pupils. I think we should be really careful before we consider reducing education budget, schools, school budgets. Five hundred and forty-two thousand pounds is a lot of money to take out of the education budget, and I think if we see a slowing in the improvements in reducing the attainment gap, I think that and the loss of the Scottish attainment challenge funding will not have helped. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. I'm sure you could have taken the opportunity to do that when you your group presented your budget on Thursday, but you you chose not to make a comment. I think it's a bit unfair then to target other elected members who did speak in that debate in a different committee, but your comments have been noted. Councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I'll stick to the report if that's okay and just address the issues here. We're actually seeing some great progress here, and I think we've got to really acknowledge the fact that the staff within the council or the work they are doing with our young people. Again, I understand others when they start making comments about certain things, but I think the staff are primarily such an important part of this and working with the students and the young people. And the progress within this this report is absolutely really welcomed, not just in the attainment levels, but also in the slight reduction in gap, percentage point gap. And I think it's really important to acknowledge the work being done to help every single child in our schools. Thank you very much, convener.
No, thank you for that. And certainly when with myself and councillor Smith are in around our schools, we see that firsthand the work that our our staff do. And also, it's not just the teaching staff, but the non-teaching staff as well, they make a huge contribution. I know some of the challenges that they face, particularly, and I know sometimes people are like us mentioning COVID again, but that was a difficult period, and it has taken a long time to try and get things back on track, and the staff are doing an amazing job. And I think certainly, if nothing else from tonight, we hope officers will take back to our staff the appreciation of the committee of the work that they do. Bailey Keenan, I see you have a comment as well.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Obviously, one to remind Bailey MacPherson, it was under Cameron and Clegg that they started austerity and started reducing budgets endlessly. Really surprised given that only chair in the meeting like you normally does, where people maybe didn't normally get this, everybody got their opportunity on Thursday, other day. And I never heard anything whatsoever about Bailey MacPherson. Can I bring it round though back to the paper again and asked in relation to, I think it's part that that's figure eight on page seven of the document that suggests that we are sitting at fourteen point three and the rest of Scotland at seventeen point four? And is that right across the whole, the number of children that we've got in the quartiles of poverty, which, you know, which would be to me quite a considerable number that are falling behind? And how do we go around seriously trying to address that?
Thank you for that. And thank you for raising a question on that actual report. I think that's really crucial as well. So, Mr. Fleming, if you want to respond?
Thank you. I'm just having a quick look. So figure eight is the percentage gap point between the pupils in primary one, primary four, primary seven combines between quintile one and quintile five. And so, yes, you'll see that we have a smaller gap than the rest of Scotland has. We do have a larger number of young people in our quintile one compared to our quintile five. If we look at the tables and the penis will show, if we look at quintile one and two, three and four, our numbers of people in all of those are ahead of the Scottish average in in all of those areas, but in quintile five, slightly different.
Okay, Bailey Keenan, you happy with that? Yeah, absolutely. Bailey Soares, you have the final comment on this.
Thanks, convener. I think some members might be reading a different report from me, because if I'm reading this correctly, and I'm looking at appendix two and page ten, back in twenty seventeen eighteen, the attainment gap in Dundee was twenty-one points as it was in Scotland. And for the last available year for a fruit tree of figures, it's still twenty-one points in Scotland, but it's sixteen in Dundee. So that seems quite a, it's still a gap that's too high, it's one we'd wish was lower, but that's a fair achievement. The way I'm reading the figures, and in the numeracy table, in the earliest years, the gap in Dundee was sixteen and across Scotland was seventeen. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, across Scotland, it's still seventeen, but in Dundee it's fourteen. So on both measures, we've narrowed the attainment gap. So I think all due congratulation to our teachers, our education staff in particular, pupils, and I think people should be a bit more positive looking at this report rather than just trying to demean what's happening in the city.
Absolutely, thank you for those comments, Bailey Soares. I think the report does show some some good progress made in our schools, as both you and councillor Fleming have said, that's a great testament to our staff in our schools, and actually also to the executive director and her team as well, who do a lot of work with the schools. So I think that should be noted as well. With that, can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Laura, can we move on to next item, please?
Item three, retaining reserved places in schools from twenty twenty-five, twenty-two twenty-six, and this is for approval.
Yeah, this is an annual report. Councillor Crookshank, I see you've got a question, so I'll bring you in.
Thank you, convener. It's good to see that some of the reserve places have been increased because of pressure in schools over the last year. However, I note that there is no increase for Grove Academy, and given that the catchment of Grove changes for next year to include Craigie Barns Primary School, will that not add pressure to the new S one intake in Grove? Thank you.
Thank you for that. And certainly a question I asked officers when I saw the report. So, Mr. Fleming, if you want to respond?
Thank you very much, convener, and thank you again, George Crookshank, for councillor Crookshank, apologies for the question. Yeah, so every year we look at the data to inform decisions for our comments here for your approval, and looking at Grove, and we've got an update, and the current update is that all placement requests really have will will receive a place into Grove, there will still be places left, and there will still be the eight reserved places still remaining. So we're very confident that that is an accurate number that will meet the needs even with Craigie Barns moving in, which has been modeled on projections around the reducing primary role in the area.
Okay, you happy with that response, councillor Crookshank?
Yes.
It's okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else wishing to comment, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Laura.
Item four, East End Community Campus, formal naming of the school and campus, and this is for approval.
Delighted to see this report come forward. This is a significant step with regards to the, and we need to stop, I had this conversation already, and East End campus, it is Greenfield Academy at the Drumgeith Community Campus. I need to get used to saying that. So I think this is a really a great milestone for for this. Councillor Crookshank, I see you have a comment?
Thank you, convener. I welcome the support, and I'm delighted to see the formal naming of the school and the campus both pay tribute to local history and the heritage of the area, but also linked to the future ambition for all those who access the school and campus. As a member of the A A C, the A A C C board, I am also aware of how much the young people from across the community have been involved in selecting these names, and this is a real tribute to their work. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. I think it's always been important through always, every time we were bringing in, building new schools, that the young people get the opportunity to have their say as well, and that was really crucial to this as well. Councillor Rome, I see you've got a comment?
Thanks, yeah, I think councillor Finnegan was ahead of me, but I'm happy to go.
On the screen, you're just first, so.
Okay, no worries at all. Just wanted to welcome this because there's been great progress on this, and as councillor Crookshank has said, you know, the board is now a lot of times to discuss this. And just looking on that theme, there's a lot mentioned about green and renewable, et cetera, and I brought up the project before, I think the importance of making sure that we have that on campus. So just looking for assurance as well, it's not exactly related to the report, but that we're progressing with the tree planting and so on, because I think that's really vital for the environment of the school as well, and that we embed that early, so to speak.
Mrs. May, you want to respond to that?
Yes, thanks, convener, thanks councillor Rome, and as a member of the board, you do remind us regularly to keep this agenda, and absolutely, I will give you a guarantee that we're still looking at how we can absolutely develop the area around the green space around this building to make sure we collect the trees that we need in the space. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Happy with that, councillor Rome? Yeah, okay, young person again.
Hi, yeah, thank you. First of all, it was just to say that I'm so glad that it's Greenfield Academy. I just thought maybe Summerfield Academy would have been really nice as well, because things flourish and bloom in summer, and there's a reference to the area as well. I'm of the days when, I still remember the Greenfield Court Maltese and the new house in the state is the Greenfields as well. My question is, apart from, sorry, the identity of, I'm so happy that the identity of the community campus is Drumgeith, so they've got their individual identities as well. I think that's really, really important. My only question is, will there be any reference within the school, such as houses or that named after the brave you in Craigie, or will it be a fresh new start for everybody?
Mrs. May, do you want a response to that?
That's convener, and thanks again for the question. That's still work that's in progress. The campus leader has been focused on getting the name for the school and the campus so far, but yeah, they're absolutely planning to have houses for young people to have that individual identity and introduce the usual competition that you get with that, and so as a as a positive incentive for young people. But they've not landed these names yet, but I'm sure there'll be some good, good, the good stuff from both the schools coming forward into that space, but we don't have it confirmed yet.
I'll be fair, it was councillor Finnegan.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, convener. I had the opportunity to look to the school at the end of last year with yourself and councillor Smith and councillor Rome at the time, just to have a wee look around and see that the investment of a hundred million pounds put into the secondary campus is actually welcome, but I think that what's even more welcomed is the engagement with the young folk within the schools as they are going to be transitioning later on this year, and then engagement in selecting these names. I've come, I've lived in Whitfield for a number of years, and when I seen Greenfield coming back to life again, I thought it was actually a welcome decision by the kids, and I think it's a great opportunity to take that history, as others have said, and bring it into the actual new campus. And again, councillor Finnegan's touched upon as well, and we talk about Drumgeith and making sure that story continues there as well. So I really welcome this, but I welcome the engagement and also the investment we've made within this first passive house design school within the city.
Okay, no, thank you for those comments. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to comment, so can this report be agreed? Okay, so that should be the final item on the agenda. However, there is one more thing. Tonight is the last committee for Marie Daly, who is retiring this week. Personally, I couldn't believe Marie was actually old enough to retire, but it must be really, chief executive must really be allowing people to return much earlier these days. So for those of you who know, Marie has been the service manager for communities since twenty sixteen, but she started her career with Strathclyde Regional Council before returning to Dundee in nineteen ninety-three as a community development project manager, before progressing to the adult learning, community regeneration manager. In the time that she's been in her role, she was involved in bringing the World Community Development Conference to Dundee and initiated Dundee this, the first time a Scottish local authority had allocated a proportion of this budget to the scheme. The community learning development team in Dundee has been inspected twice by Education Scotland, and both times in Marie's time, and both times inspectors have said that leadership of the CLD in Dundee is strong and effective, and that high quality learning programmes are having life-changing impacts. And indeed, the last time they came here, they said that it was actually set to lead in the work that we're doing, and that's a huge credit. And that's a huge credit to Marie and the team that she leads. Marie will be a loss since communities came under this kind of committee and both councillor Smith and I have got really involved with the community team. Marie's been a real help to us and a real asset and helped us kind of get to grips with all the things that happen here. And as I said to Marie last week when I spoke with her, on a personal level, the work that she did for the Ivory Village Trust, which made that from a situation where ADT was not in a great place, but is now in a much better place and really helping the community. A lot of that goes down to the work that Marie put in and a lot of times unheralded. And I'm sure if we spoke to a lot of elected members here, there'll be other parts of your board that you could probably talk about that Marie's had a positive impact on. So Marie, you will be a huge loss to the council, but I really wish you all the best with your retirement. I'm aware you're going on a fantastic holiday in the next few weeks and it sounds, it sounds fantastic and really jealous of that. But all the best of luck with your retirement. Bailey McPherson, I see that you have a comment as well.
Thanks indeed, Convenor. And I would just like to concur with your comments. Marie's been an extremely helpful officer in all things adult learning, community regeneration and so on. At all times, she's been very prompt at replying to inquiries. She's always willing to meet you to discuss matters. And you're absolutely right, Convenor. Leaving the council will be a very significant loss in that area. And so wishing you a very long and happy retirement, Marie. A very happy holiday when it comes as well. I'm sure our paths will cross. Marie is a constituent of mine, so I'm sure our paths will cross. But as I say, wishing you all the best, Marie, and very many thanks for the very great amount of hard work that you've put in, in all the years you've been with Dundee City Council. Thank you, Convenor.
Okay, Bailey Keane, you wish to come in as well?
Yeah, just to echo what's already been said. Obviously, Marie's been a great officer over the years, a very much can-do approach to resolving a problem, which is really appreciated, makes life easy for everyone. So I appreciate the work you have done on behalf of council, Marie. Wish you all the best for the future. Enjoy that holiday and have a long and happy retirement.
With that, before I allow Marie to come in, can I just ask that we all recognise Marie in the usual manner? Yeah, I think you are on the call, so if you, if you have anything you wish to say, please say it.
I'm just catching my breath. Thank you so much for those kind words. Yeah, now you know, I'm old enough to retire because you said when I started work, it did start in with Strathclyde Region in 1986, but returned home to Dundee in 1993, a decision which I've never regretted. And it's been an absolute pleasure and a privilege to work with colleagues, elected members, and most of all, the communities within Dundee. I will really, really miss it. But also I've got plans and family commitments that I think I now need to spend a bit of time on. So thank you so much for those kind words and I wish everybody the best for the future. Thank you.
No, thank you, Marie. And as said earlier on, enjoying retirement is certainly well deserved. And with that, that is the committee. So thank you.
One more for the job, yeah, for the chief.
Okay, welcome to neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management. Laura, if you could lead us off, please.
First item on declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
You, Laura, please.
Item two, sourcing strategy for the procurement of scaffolding services framework. This is for approval.
Okay, I'm just going to open this to questions. Bailey Scott.
I just wondered if construction services have some of their own scaffold or do they hire it all in for all the jobs that they do? Because it seems to me that it's quite expensive to hire it and would it be not, might be more cost effective for them to have some scaffolding of their own? And another question I have is that, given the cost of hiring the scaffolding in, it seems to me that it would make sense for the jobs that we do to be dovetailed with the scaffolding arriving. Because quite often I've seen works progressing where, or not progressing, the scaffolding's been erected and nothing's done for a long time. And then work seems to be piecemeal, piecemeal ongoing while the scaffolding's there. So it seems we're paying for scaffolding even though nothing's being done. So I just wondered whether there's a better way of dovetailing works programme to make sure that scaffolding being hired at the daily rate that we must be paying for it is hired for the minimum time possible.
Thank you for the question. Tony, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey Scott, for the question. Yeah, we do have some scaffolders, but we do not have sufficient equipment. This is why we're taking this forward. We do at all times try and dovetail all the contracts already. The report highlights the actual need of £850,000 worth of scaffolding work, which goes hand in glove with the construction and various development programmes we've got across the city. So it's an essential part of what the core duty of the service are. So I hope that answers the question, Bailey Scott.
Thank you, Tony. I see no further questions on that item. So is that approved? Thank you. Laura, please.
Item three, empowered communities, source of strategy for the procurement of housing walls improvement works. And this is for approval.
Okay, thank you. I'll open that up to Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Perhaps committee services could be so kind as to circulate my amendment. It'll come as no surprise because it's just purely in terms of our group's longstanding position regarding delegation to officers. And we feel that delegation of £500,000 is too high. And that we've taken the view repeatedly that anything above £200,000 should come back to committee for elected members to make a determination, as much for any reason as transparency. So I'll not say anything more because it's nothing that I've not said before. But certainly, we would certainly be of the view that reducing the £500,000 to £200,000 is from the point of view of transparency and elected members making the determination are sensible move forward. Thank you, Convenor.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Councillor Duncan, are you formally seconding or do you wish to comment?
Convenor, yeah, I'll formally second. And in the interest of bravery and consistency, I'll not throw on my response. I do second.
Okay, and for bravery and consistency, I will take us straight to the vote. Laura, if you could lead us through that, please. Convenor, could I confirm who your second is, please? Yep, councillor Short, thank you. Thank you, Convenor.
Okay, the motion by the convenor, certainty by councillor Short, is the agreement of the report as submitted. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is circulated. Convenor.
Motion, sorry.
Yeah, motion. Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Ellie Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter. Councillor Len.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion, please.
Councillor Rome.
Motion, please.
Ellie Sors.
Motion.
Councillor Short. Motion, please. Councillor Smith. Councillor Tolland.
Oh, it's working, yeah, motion.
Ellie Keenan.
No vote.
Councillor Crookshank.
No vote.
Councillor Finnegan.
No vote.
Councillor McHugh.
No vote.
Councillor McCarvin.
No vote.
Councillor Scullion.
No vote.
Councillor Shears.
No vote.
Bailey Wright.
No vote.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
And Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So we have 14 for the motion and five for the amendments. The motion is carried.
Thank you. So with that, that is approved. If you could take us on to the next item, please, Laura.
Item four, tender received by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
Okay, I'll just open this for questions on what is a very positive and varied set of improvements around our communities. Councillor Black, please.
Just wanted to say that I'm pleased that that environmental work is going to be done in the Dunmore area. If your environment is depressing, then that's just no good in terms of your quality of life, your ability to enjoy your life. Environmental improvements, I think, can make a huge difference to people. And I'm really pleased it's happening in this area now. So I welcome that investment, Convenor.
I think you're absolutely correct in what you say there, councillor Black. So thank you very much for raising that. Councillor Scullion, please.
I just wanted to say I'm very thankful to see that the flat roofs are getting placed in Dryborough as some of them actually have forests growing out of them at the moment. So we'll have a lot of happy people in Dryborough.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, I see no further comments. So is that approved?
Please.
Thank you. That then is the business. Hey, good evening. Welcome to city governance. Arlene, please. Don't see any, so just take that as noted, please, and move on.
Phil Expenditure Monitoring, 2024 to 2025, and this is for noting.
Any questions? Bailey McPherson, first question.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, the committee clerk's microphone wasn't heard by those that are external of the meeting. So I presume that we are on item two. Is that correct, Convenor?
Yes, there was also an issue in the hall as well, in the room as well. So we acknowledge that and we are on item two. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And my question is indeed in relation to item two. And I'm wondering if officers could just give me a bit of clarity. It's about the information on page 12, the table on page 12 under built resilient and empowered communities. The figures for projected outturn appear to be a bit of a cut and paste of the revised budget figures. They're exactly the same down both columns. And the reason I'm querying that, and I'm really wanting assurance that the projected outturn is likely to be exactly that, the outturn, is because there's a fair old gap. I'm looking particularly at road maintenance partnership. The amount spent as of the 31st of January, that's just eight weeks to go to the end of the financial year, 2.9 million. The projected outturn is 3.3 million. That's a lot to spend in eight weeks, £400,000. It's similarly slightly smaller figures, but the same principle applies, for example, with street lighting with parks and open spaces. So I'm just really wondering if officers are actually confident that by the 31st of March, in other words, by the end of the month, these projected outturns will actually be delivered as per the revised budgets.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, councillor, for the question. So just to confirm in relation to page 12, the reason that the revised budget figures and the projected outturn figures are the same as part of the capital plan process, we do review the current year and restate that budget in line with where we expect the outturn to be. And in relation to the projected outturn itself, I can confirm that officers meet regularly with all budget holders. And the projected outcome is indeed the best estimate that we have at this point of view. Some of the actual costs may not be on the report as they may relate to internal transfers, et cetera, that go through the council's ledger at the end of the year. But there will be one last further update on the capital monitoring report that comes to committee in April. So if there's any further changes, we're happy to include them in that report.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. Any comment?
No, that's most helpful, Mr. Thompson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rome, please.
Thank you, Convenor. And just as I've asked this before, just asked this again, it's regarding the risk metrics in appendix four of the capital monitoring, specifically items three and four. Now, appreciate that you can't always mitigate all risk away. And it may well be that it's fair enough that it hasn't changed. But just looking at the mitigations and after mitigations, the risk is exactly the same with a very high impact and likelihood. I'm just wondering if we looked at other councils for either ideas to manage this risk more effectively or indeed whether the risk should be lower following these mitigations because it's concerning potentially that it hasn't changed. And it may well be actually less risky than it seems after these mitigations.
Thank you for that. Paul, on to you.
Yes, indeed. Thanks, councillor, for the question. So happy to pick that up through discussions in the capital governance group and also with that, with officers as part of the regular review. And there are no projects that I'm aware of that are beyond the estimated completion date as reflected in the report. So I take your point in terms of the level of risk, but certainly happy to pick that up for future reports.
Thank you. Thank you. I see no further questions, so we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you, Arlene.
Thank you. Item three, revenue monitoring, 2024 to 2025. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Thank you. So straight to the report. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Just a question I've got regarding 5.2 on page 24, indicating that the estimated winter maintenance overspend is £700,000. I'm going to stick my neck out slightly and say I don't think it's been a particularly harsh winter that we've just had. And therefore, it occurs to me that if there's going to be a £700,000 overspend, I'm just wondering if the budgeted amount is not actually inadequate.
Thank you for the question and we won't tempt fate with the whether or not we don't. Oh, Mr. Thompson, again, please.
So again, thank you, councillors, for the question. So I could confirm that the level of spend on winter maintenance is similar to we have experienced in previous years. As part of the budget process, this has been recognised, although the approach that's been recommended by officers that we seek to manage this risk within the overall budget as opposed to identifying savings to increase the budget.
Good answer, question, councillor Duncan. Good answer to your question, councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Bailey Keenan, please.
Um, like I asked the question on six point two, health and social care partnership. Uh, given that it's predicted an overspend of eight point seven six two, and, uh, continued to use the reserves at four point eight. And the officers are continuing to work with, uh, with the partnership, obviously, on a recovery plan. And I'm, and I'm just wondering when the rest of office councillors will see what that recovery plan looks like. Uh, is there any indication now as to what that looks like? And I'm really concerned from the point of view of get regular calls where people saying, you know, we're currently in hospital, looking to get out. And, uh, there doesn't appear to be that care package there quick enough for them or going to be a care package at all, uh, in the case of one person. So really concerned about the financial state of the health and social care budget, uh, as is predicted within this paper. And wondering how soon we'll have an understanding of not just the sort of financial recovery, but the effects on services as as potentially things will be cut.
That's for the question. I think, uh, Tayside has one of the best discharge records across the country. So I'm quite surprised by your comments. Well, bringing in.
Well, you're happy to share the constituent with you.
All right, I'll bring in Mr. Cohen, please.
Thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey Keenan. So the financial recovery plan for the I G B was previously brought to committee. I'm happy to share that. And following on from previous discussions, we will arrange a briefing for all elected members to update on the financial position of the I G B.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Alend, please.
The, the, the points that I was going to make, uh, have been made by yourself and the chief executives. Thank you.
For that, I see no further comments or questions, so we'll take this report as agreed. Thank you. Arlene, please.
That takes us on to item four, managing the workforce of the future, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Report seeks approval of a fixed duration voluntary severance or retirement scheme with enhancements. Uh, any questions or comments? And Bailey Scott, please.
I, I wanted to ask about the, um, the, the length of time for recouping the costs of the early severance schemes. And I can, I can understand with, um, voluntary redundancy that that can be recovered. The set number of weeks that they get will receive payment and that will be eventually recovered. But, um, I can't see how that works with, um, uh, uh, taking your pension earlier and not having it reduced. So for instance, if someone retires at fifty-five, the normal retirement age would be sixty-seven. That means they're getting twelve years, it would normally be reduced by twelve years, which I think is about a forty-three percent reduction in your pension if you're taking that early. That's my understanding that it's the department that person retires from will pick up the cost of that and the added years as well. If, I think it's one forty-ninth, uh, each year of your salary goes towards your pension. So three years would be six percent added to the pension. That's another cost for the department that's leaving. So how will those costs ever be recovered as per the report? If there's an ongoing cost to the department for paying that early pension. Because someone who retires at fifty-five may have had over thirty years of service to the council and might have a pretty substantial pension at that time. And if it's not being reduced by what would have been forty-three percent, it's a significant cost to the department going forward.
Thanks for the question. Can I bring in Mr. Emmett, please?
So thanks, convener. Um, and thanks, Bailey Scott. I think it's important to understand that the cost of letting someone go early through the pension scheme can be very high. And the financial assessment, it will be a cruc- critical part of whether or not we can afford to let the person go. The, um, there is effectively an up, you can work out what the upfront costs to the pension fund is of letting someone go early, and that's the figure that will be taken into account in the calculation. So the reality is it would have to be an affordable package for someone to go. Um, and someone who's got a lot of service, um, and is some distance from, um, normal retirement age, the costs may well be prohibitive in terms of whether that post would fit in terms of the scheme, convener.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Could you just confirm though that the cost is met by the department and not by the pension fund?
So the costs are met by the council, yes. The cost, the pension fund would have to be remunerated, not the word, reimbursed for the cost of that actuarial, actuarial reduction. You're absolutely right, councillor Scott, Bailey Scott, sorry.
Thanks. Okay, great. Uh, councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. Uh, negative impacts relating to female workers have been identified in the impact assessment attached to this report. There's no information on any measures that might be put in place to mitigate these negative impacts, although my understanding is that that is the process that should be followed where negative impacts are identified in impact assessments. I note, however, that we are asked to authorise the chief executive after consultation with the trade unions to determine and implement a policy to take this proposal forward. I'm asking then for an assurance that those identified negative impacts will be specifically addressed during discussions with our trade union colleagues. And consideration be given to what mitigations can be put in place to address negative impacts that disproportionately affect our female workforce.
Thanks for the question. Now, Arlene, is she coming on this one?
Thanks, convener, and thank you, councillor, for the question. Yeah, I can give you that reassurance. Um, and part of the narrative in the report talks about our ability to look at workforce planning and where we might be able to, um, enable an exit for a colleague in further years through knowing what their intentions might be. So that's one of the mitigations that we would use. Um, but certainly, yes, we'll keep that communication going with trade union colleagues. Um, and that's something that we have already been discussing with them.
Thank, thank you for that. Has that answered your question, councillor McHugh?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Toland, please.
Just want, yeah, it's good. And it kind of follows on a little bit. I just wanted to. Just wanted to congratulate, I mean, it's never good when we're dealing with job cuts, but I think that the consultation with the trade unions is is vital. And I would like to congratulate the council and have been given reassurances that that consultation has been ongoing with the trade unions. Um, I'm just going to fill a bit of background down with the U C U. I'm currently on strike in Dundee University, where there's been absolutely no negotiation or consultation with the trade unions at that point. So we've got kind of two examples and extremes of practice, I think. One of which is the Dundee University is offering bad practice and one here where perhaps offering much better and good practice. Um, I am aware that the S N P administration, of course, spoke to the trade unions before this came, um, because that is absolutely vital in how we move forward. Um, and I hope other political parties did the same too.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. And I agree with what you've said there. I get, for him, the, the deputy convener and myself, actually, did. Deputy leader, I should say, has met with the unions last week to discuss a number of things. Thank you.
Convener, uh, more than happy to attend these meetings that you have with trade unions.
Sorry?
More than happy to attend the meetings that you have with trade unions when you're talking about redundancy.
Go on, talk about anything in particular. Just take a comment. Don't speak over me. Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't see any further comments or questions, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you.
Item five, postal services, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
It's quite clear what we're trying to do here. So the members are asked to agree. Any comments? Councillor Crichton, please.
Thanks, um, convener. Um, whilst it is clear from paragraph three point two, that whistle contract option is clearly the cheapest. Um, are officers satisfied it passes the quality test? Specifically, I note, um, that they are not a living wage accredited. Um, if the report is agreed, can I ask the officers will engage, uh, with whistle management to encourage living wage accreditation?
Thank you. I'll bring in Mr. Emmett, please.
Uh, thank you, convener. So on the last point, that, um, encouraging suppliers to engage with living wages is is our customer practice in terms of, um, procurement. Um, we've got no issues about deliverability and you'll be aware that there are, um, times when we've had had difficulty with providers of postal services in the past. So we're satisfied that the proposal we're bringing forward, um, will deliver the quality that we need.
Okay, has that answered your question, Michael?
Yep, I don't think you can be.
Great, thanks very much. Don't see any further questions or comments, so we'll take the support as agreed. Arlene, please.
Yeah, that takes us on to item six, by this library management software renewal, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, it's quite straightforward. Any questions or comments? Don't see any, so we'll take that one as agreed as well. Thank you.
Item seven, geographic information system software, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, just leave it open for a second. Don't see any questions or comments, so we'll take that one as agreed. Thank you.
Item eight, network and wifi hardware for East End community campus. And again, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Yeah, I don't see any questions or comments, so I think that one's agreed as well. Thanks, Arlene, please.
Item nine, sourcing strategy for the procurement of provision of occupational health services. This is for approval.
Thank you again. No comments or questions, so take that one as agreed. Thanks, Arlene.
Last item, item ten, tenders received by leisure and culture Dundee for rental service and maintenance of gym equipment. This is for approval.
Again, no questions or comments, so we'll take that one as agreed. Uh, thank you very much. Just before we finish, can I just, the, the mic can indulge me. Uh, Mr. Emmett, or Robert, is, uh, due to leave us. This is his last committee this evening after joining in twenty twenty-one, just after Covid. It's made a massive contribution to the city. And I have to thank him for his efforts and welcome the opportunity to say this tonight. I think over the, the last number of years, we've all worked well across the, the whole council with Robert. And I think he's contributed in many boards and many organizations across the council, whether it be Tayside, his leisure and culture, et cetera. And I think he's a member of the L and C E D board as well. And I think he's created a key role as a section ninety-five officer since he arrived. So I'd like to take this opportunity, Robert, to thank you for your, all the work you have done over the last number of years since you arrived. And although it's our loss, it's Glasgow's gain, I would say. And I think I congratulate and welcome. And hope you enjoy your time when you go to Glasgow. I think from my group, I like to say thanks very much and open up to anyone else who likes to make comment. Bailey McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks indeed, convener. And I would just concur with your comments. Uh, Robert is extremely knowledgeable and good at his, uh, role and, uh, has been extremely helpful. I'm sure every member of the council would agree that he's always very approachable. He's always very helpful. And, uh, that helpfulness and sheer breadth of knowledge will indeed, as you correctly say, convener, be Glasgow's gain if, if, if it is not obviously our loss. So wishing Robert very well. He'll have his work out in Glasgow. I used to do quite a lot of work with Glasgow when I worked for SIF a good few years ago. And it's a significantly larger council than our own. But in many respects, actually, a lot of the issues affecting Glasgow socio-economically are very similar to ours. But just, uh, a larger population, significantly larger population. But I'm sure that Robert will, uh, fit into his role in Glasgow just as well as he fitted into his role in Dundee, coming from a much different council prior to Dundee. So wishing Robert very, very, uh, much success in his new role. Uh, and thank you very much indeed, Robert, for all you've done for Dundee City Council over the past few years.
Thank you for the comments, Billy McPherson, that. And I'm sure Robert will welcome him as well. I'll come back in shortly. Councillor Rome, please.
Thanks very much, uh, convener. You mentioned that the boards that Robert stands on as as well. Uh, and one of those boards is Tayside Contracts as a section ninety-five officer. And the next meeting next week, I fully intend to embarrass Robert with as much praise as he can stand. Uh, and I would echo the comments of others and point out we've done everything short cheating to the desk to try and convince him to stay, including pointing out this may be the last time he sees the sun for some time. But, uh, just like to thank you again, and I will see you next week, Robert.
Yeah, thanks, councillor Rome. Uh, Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, Robert, I think you've played a great role for Dundee and I wish you well moving forward in the Glasgow. And I know you've got your work cut out for you there, find another seventeen and a half million pounds worth of teachers. They poach and they poach, you know, for Dundee now. Uh, and, uh, you know, you've obviously got a, a directorate or a chief execs that managed to pay themselves off. And that's been investigated as well. So you're a section ninety-five officer, you've, you've certainly got your work cut out for you. I hope you haven't arrested any skeletons in the closet here for when you walk away. Uh, but I'm, I'm sure you haven't, you've been professional all the way and gave good support to, uh, you know, us in opposition and, uh, good support to other agencies such as where arms-length organisations, what you've done has been fair all the way through. Uh, I really appreciate that. And, uh, earlier, when I looked around and didn't see your wingman at the top table there, I thought, I'm going to go out of my way to make his life awkward on his last shout like, but, uh, seeing your wingman was here, it didn't bother. I wish you all the best and hope, uh, you and your family enjoy your time in Glasgow.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. And finally, Bailey Scott, please.
Just to be associated with all the remarks already been said and to thank you, Robert, for all the help and support you've given me and for the, the service you provided for Dundee. You must be a real glutton for punishment though, going from Dundee to what you're going to be faced in, in Glasgow. I particularly want to thank you though for the time that you gave, you give to me at budget time, when you provide me with the same level of attention as you do with any of the larger groups. And sometimes I felt pretty bad that I was taking up your time to produce a budget. Was unlikely to get a, a second, but I, I thank you for your, for your assistance with that.
Yeah, thanks very much. And I think everybody is delighted, uh. And, and thank, thanks again, Robert. I think over to you if you want to say something more.
Just to say thank you, it's been a privilege and a pleasure to work with you all. And, um, I hope I'll be able to keep in touch with you. I'll certainly be keeping a careful eye on what's happening in, in Dundee when I've got time. So thank you, convener.
Thanks very much. And as councillor, I'm going to start the trend tonight. Can we just show a round of applause, please? And now we've embarrassed them totally, I think that's closing the committee. Thank you.